Order of the Lake Mills City Council, October 1st, 2024. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Kednau?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
And Ms. Curler previously informed staff that she'd be unavailable for this evening's meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, would everyone rise and please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next on the agenda is the Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes from the City Council meeting September 17th, Ad Hoc Committee on Urban Forest Management of August 19th and September 9th, and the Housing Authority of May 28th and June 25th. Is there any questions or comments on any of those reports? Seeing none, I'll accept those into the record. Correspondents from the community. I'll start with you, Michelle.
I had correspondence regarding the Century Building.
Okay, me as well. Anyone else have anything else to add? Yes, Mary.
I have also Century Building and... Oh, thank you. Thought it was on, thank you. I also had Century Building, but in addition, I had several citizens interested in Sandy Beach Restaurant, specifically mentioned a public meeting, and then also a correspondence on communication.
Okay, Steve, anything else?
I just had one on Century also, and then I had an article forwarded to me on the Cambridge Deerfield EMS.
Okay, great. All right, public comment, I don't see anyone in the chamber. Anybody online want to talk tonight? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move past that agenda item. City Manager Report.
You've all received some, an email from Madison trying to schedule a budget work session, so we haven't found a date yet, but we're gonna keep working at it. The FAQ page for the Sandy Beach Restaurant referendum should be active tomorrow, and we'll do some social media posting on that as well to direct people to it. We have heard some desire for some kind of public forum. I'm gonna try and schedule one. I'm gonna look at the week of the 14th or the 21st, I think. Just for anyone watching tonight, I just want to reiterate that the city, specifically from a staff perspective and just overall as an organization, we don't have a position on a yes or no vote, so we won't be advocating for an outcome at the forum, but we'll be available to answer some questions on what the project entails, financing, kind of those details of it. A lot of it will be available in the FAQ that we're gonna be putting out. And then as we receive other questions, if we put out a second FAQ or something like that, we'll update it as questions come in that we find people are seeking for. So those are the two largest updates. Also, just wanted to recognize one of our linemen. Austin was recognized by, was it WPPI? WPPI is one of the top linemen in the state of Wisconsin, so just wanted to give that shout out and pass that along. We have an excellent electrical crew, and I think that bears itself out. Austin's currently acting as our foreman as well, so we're very lucky to have him, and just congratulate him on the honor.
Fantastic, that's great to hear about Austin and that honor. So I know it's a tough job, so it's great when you can get recognized for that type of thing. So, fantastic. Any other questions or comments for the City Manager tonight? All right, moving on to the Agenda Update Report on All Terrain Vehicles. Staff Report?
Sure, I will give a little overview. Chief Schroeder is on online as well if there's questions of him, but not a lot of incidents. The chief ran a report, and we're looking at just about eight, eight or so since 2023. The most recent of which, and most serious of which I suppose of these here, was a OWI citation. That one's of note because it is considered a... And Chief Schroeder, please correct me if I'm wrong, and a violation under DNR Administrative Code, not under statute, so it did, does carry a lesser penalty. But Chief Schroeder had mentioned to me in one of our monthly conversations that the state may be looking at adjusting that as ATVs on roadways is becoming more and more common, that maybe they will line those up better, but they have not currently. Chief, I don't know if you want to elaborate at all on that specifically or any of the other incidences that you've had, but that's largely the incidents we've had connected to the ATV ordinance.
Yeah, I can, I can comment on it. The OWI that we had in late August was actually an individual we had arrested for an OWI third offense, driving a vehicle about a month prior to that. It was at about 3 o'clock in the morning on Tyranny and Park Road, so I don't know if it was a way to subvert the regular OWI laws by driving an ATV, but the penalty is certainly less severe on an ATV. There is not, to my knowledge, current legislation in the works to change the law, but I think it's a widespread feeling as we're seeing more and more municipalities, especially cities, pass ATV, UTV route ordinances, where we feel like for safety purposes that we'd like to push as law enforcement for them to be treated more similar to a motor vehicle OWI if they're operating on an actual roadway. But again, there's not legislation in the works yet. I think that's just a common feeling and a problem that we're talking about amongst law enforcement.
All right, so the reason we're reviewing this tonight was because it was in the original ordnance that we passed that we would review and get an update roughly a year later, and this is kind of what we're doing, what the process we're going through tonight. On those eight situations, they just vary from...
Operating after hours.
Which is after sunset?
Right. Some teenagers running stop signs. In fact, all of them, six of the eight involve teenagers. One was not old enough to be driving on the roadway, was only 15. Acting erratic, driving erratically, driving too fast, doing wheelies. Most of the interactions were with minors, 16 to 18, 16 to 17-year-olds. So, most of the interactions have been warnings with some citations, but that's kind of the spread that we've seen.
Okay. So with this information, I guess if the council members wanted to do anything with the current ordinance, they would need to go through that process. So any other questions or thoughts here?
I have one question and one thought on the ordinance. So I have a question, when we approved the ordinance to have ATV, UTV utilization here in the city, did we anticipate, what did we anticipate as far as issues? And are we surprised that we have a lot fewer? Or is this about what we would have expected, given the volume that we see?
I began right as this was entering final approval. I think some of the concerns that were raised were concerns about interactions between ATVs and pedestrians or ATVs and other vehicles, that the chance of a severe accident is higher if you're having an accident between an ATV and your typical motor vehicle. So I think there were concerns over that. I think maybe perhaps concerns about, I don't know, Attorney Drescher, perhaps you might recall, interactions with bike lanes. You know, there were some incidences early on that they were, they were seen interacting with the bike lanes on Main Street specifically that we were hoping to avoid. I think the benefits that the council may have been considering is increased access to downtown businesses, being able to take advantage of kind of countywide groups that enjoy it recreationally and patronizing businesses as they come through. So I think the concerns were perhaps were safety-related. I guess I don't know whether to say if this is more or less than what we expected, but I think we're certainly happy that we haven't had a serious accident that involved serious injury or something like that. So that's about as good of a summary, I think, as we have.
Thank you.
I guess as a opinion from staff, would this be a, would having UTVs be a negative effect, a positive effect, kind of a neutral effect? I mean, if these teenagers would have been in automobiles instead of UTVs, would you still have the same interaction?
Yeah, Chief, do you have, I don't think we would say that we felt a negative effect of them. We certainly have noticed, Chief has told me they've noticed a drop-off since school has started, so obviously, driving erratically in a vehicle is dangerous as well. Chief Schroeder?
Yeah, and I would say if you look at the dates of the interactions we have had, they were all either in June, July, or August of 2023, or the same time period in 2024, oddly enough. I haven't seen a negative impact from a public safety perspective. I don't have major concerns about the way the ordinance is written. I think it allows reasonable limitations on the use of UTVs and ATVs on the streets, and allows us as a police department to enforce those limitations to maintain public safety. So I would not have any recommendation as far as changing the ordinance, and I have no issue with maintaining the ordinance as it exists.
I would add, we did ask Director Schreiner if he's had any incidents at parks or anything of that, any damage or illegal parking or any difficulties, and no, they haven't experienced that at the park system. And then haven't heard, haven't had much feedback from, you know, the business community like at legendary Lake Mills meetings or anything, one way or the other, but certainly no negative reactions brought up to it. So overall, I don't, I would not say we've had a negative experience since it's been, it's been brought up or approved.
Any other comments?
Yes.
I just had one on the comment regarding the lesser, less serious offense with an OWI in the ATV versus an automobile or other. That is something that we can take a look at as City Council, or is that something that's only driven at a state level?
No, it's OWI in recreational vehicles just treated differently than an OWI in an automobile by designating our city streets as ATV routes. We've allowed access to recreational vehicles. This is the appropriate way to prosecute an OWI that is on an ATV. It's set by code.
It's set by code, okay.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on. Agenda item B is Resolution 24-65. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Resolution 24-65 authorizing the City Manager and Public Works Department to install a crosswalk on the north side of the intersection of Fremont Street and Madison Street.
All right. Is there a motion, or should we move on to a staff comment?
We can run through the presentation that was given to the Public Works Board if you would like, but the Public Works Board did make a recommendation for the painting of a crosswalk at this location. They looked at a few different options, and this was the one that they wished to pursue. So if there's a desire for, to go through what the Public Works Board went through in their decision-making process, we certainly can. Otherwise, they recommended approval of this to you.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-65, crosswalk north side of Fremont Crossing on Madison Street.
Second.
So motion by Greg and a second by Michelle. So yeah, could you walk us through that? You going to the podium? Okay. So as you're getting ready, I saw that you had thrown out some different options tonight, so it's a little bit different than what we had saw at Public Works, but with the cost numbers and everything filled in, but...
Should be exactly the same.
Okay.
Should be exactly what we presented at Public Works Board. If you are seeing a difference, should be the same documents as what I was told was brought forward.
On the spreadsheet?
Yes, is that an older document? One second. 23,000. I believe that's what's in the document, so both the...
It's two different documents.
The cost estimate, the OCPP?
Yeah, let's go ahead with the presentation that you have up.
Okay, thanks. So, Dave, thanks for bringing that up. This is the document that was provided at the August, I believe it was 13th, Public Works Board meeting with the issue. Of course, I'll start with, obviously, from a staff's perspective, safety is the most important thing. Kind of talked about that in the previous topic, but Pine Street to Main Street is the area in question on Madison Street. Next slide, please. Madison Street in that area has a speed limit of 25 miles an hour, and all of the intersections are uncontrolled, meaning there are no stop signs on Madison Street to slow traffic down from city limits to Main Street. And Main Street, there's a four-way stop, is the first controlled intersection. Next slide, please. So from a safety perspective, staff typically doesn't mark crossings because in some crossings on uncontrolled intersections, because sometimes that gives a false perspective of safety for that pedestrian. They think that there's a painting, there's paint marks there, that people are automatically gonna stop. Yes, there is an ordinance and that it is, the car has to stop for that pedestrian. It's just that false sense. So typically, staff will recommend an RFB or rectangular rapid flashing beacon in areas where we're uncontrolled intersections, in other words, no stopping, and to bring attention to that driver in the car, that there's someone going to be in the crosswalk. City currently has four of these, Madison and College, Main and Water, Main and Milton, Mulberry and Fargo. And there is also one that we hope will be installed yet this fall. We're still waiting on that from the TAP grant, and that's at the grocery store on County Shrunk Highway V at the Lake Mills Market. Next slide, please. These are just pictures of those four locations and a little bit of explanation of what that RFB is. It's a push button, does a rapid flashing, announces to the driver that there's gonna be somebody probably in the crosswalk, and you should stop. Those are the four sites we have. This one at College Street actually has an overhead arm. That will also be the case on the one on County Shrunk Highway B by Lake Mills Market. We'll also have an overhead arm to draw more attention to that area. Next slide, please. We also then looked at what are some of the warrants related to when do you put in an RFB? So the warrants that are in this document, the WISDOT Traffic Engineering Operations Safety Manual, Chapter 4, Section 5, here are some of the reasons or where you would use them and is the intersection that we're talking about meeting that. So the first is, is it an uncontrolled intersection? All of the ones we looked at are yes, so there's a yes to all of those. Second one is, a minimum volume of 20 or more pedestrians during a single hour on an average day should be met. And in addition to that, any young children under 12 or elderly over 85 should count twice toward that volume threshold. When we get into further slides, we'll talk about some traffic counts that the police department did for us, and if Steve's still on the line, I may have him add in some comments. Item number three, minimum volume of 1,500 vehicles per day. And Dave, is there any way to slide that slide up? Okay, one second.
resize.
I'll bear with me, I'll bring it up on my computer so I can...
You want me to bring it over?
No, I have it. Just one more second, I have it. The fifth, or the fourth item that we're not seeing on the screen is maximum of four lanes crossed, obviously, this is two lanes and a parking lane, and a minimum of 300 feet to the nearest controlled pedestrian crossing or some other crossing that's shown, and that there's an adequate... You can see two students and one adult in the morning, four students and three adults. The maximum hourly projected count at this intersection, this is the Prospect Street intersection, was 12. So of course, 12 is less than 20, so it doesn't meet the volume of pedestrians in the warrant. Next slide, please. This next slide is at Pine Street. Again, the maximum hourly projected count was 10, again, less than 20. Next slide, please. Is, the next slide is Madison and Fremont. Again, the maximum hourly count was 14. Again, doesn't meet the warrant. Next slide, please. This is just an aerial of the Madison at Prospect. In the original Public Works Board meeting, there was discussion about this being a route to school. Connects Prospect Street to the Main Street Crossing that is, actually has a crossing guard. And so this would provide a route to that, to that area. As you can see from this aerial, there are no sidewalks that extend across the street at all, so that means there are no handicap ramps. If we use this location, we will have to provide concrete ramps, concrete curb replacements, and then the signs and the crosswalk painting. And potentially, and as staff as recommended, would be looking at the RFB, but the warrant isn't met, so it's not required. But again, safety. Staff tends to like to go to the RFB in uncontrolled intersections, although the warrants are not met at this location. Next slide, please. This is the same intersection, just a side view. Kind of show how the concern here is if there is a cost increase on the west side of the road. ADA requires that the handicap ramp meets ADA accessibility, so that sidewalk would actually have to be lowered that's existing on the west side of the street. That actually increases the cost estimates on the Prospect Street intersection, or cost estimates. Next slide, please. So the two options that were presented, or three options that were presented for Prospect Street, one is the RFB with an OPCC of 23,000. That includes the RFB, the signs, the handicap ramps, the sidewalk, and the markings. Option two is no RFB and use of flags or some other method to improve pedestrian safety and visibility to the vehicles traveling in the area. That OPCC is $8,000. And then option three is maintain the existing condition, which is no crosswalk at all. Next slide. This is Fremont Street, that's the other intersection that was discussed at the Public Works Board meeting. In this case, on the north side of the road, as you can see, there are already handicap ramps. There is already a sidewalk to the street. So the cost estimate would only include the RFB and the painting and the signs. So the price is gonna go down a little bit on this site. And next slide, please. And as you can see, there's a handicap ramp there on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. One caveat to this one is Fremont Street, also in the WISDOT Safety Manual, they talk about a rule of thumb of 1,200 feet from the nearest RFB. In this case, there already is an RFB at College Street. And at the bottom of this slide that you're not seeing on the screen, existing College Street RFB is 650 feet away from this intersection. So in this case, it wouldn't, again, another warrant that would say, don't put an RFB at Madison and Fremont. Next slide, please. Back to the opinions of probable cause. As you can see, the price goes down to 18,000 for the RFB. Option two, without the RFB, drops to 3,000, really only talking about the signage and the paints, painting. And then option three, leave it as it is with a handicap ramp without markings in the street. I tried to do that very quickly to summarize the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
So the recommended option was, from Public Works Board, was option two at Madison Street and Fremont Street. That's what came out of the Public Works Board.
All right. And there is a spreadsheet that outlines some of the costs as well included in the packet. Any questions or comments to staff? Yes.
So it says a use of flags or other methods. Do you have an idea of what that would look like?
If we implemented it, it's, you have a barrel or a canister of some kind that has brightly colored orange-red flags on one side. You pick it up, cross the street with it, drop it in on the other. That is basically what that looks like, low cost. They do get, they do get lost, taken, broken relatively quickly, so they would need to be replaced or...
Yes.
If I may, maybe went a little quick through the first part to restate, this was brought to the Public Works Board attention at a public comment by a public resident, bringing the issue forward, looking for crosswalks, if I wasn't clear on that at the beginning of the presentation.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I ask a question? Why the other two streets were removed from consideration? The Pine and... Oh, hang on, let me go down to my... There were two other, there were three options?
Yeah, I really can't speak to why they were not brought up. I can only speak to the one that was brought up.
It was chosen, okay.
There was really no discussion on those other...
Okay.
Others, other than this would make sense to move forward with this particular site.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is this an item that was budgeted for already, or you sit on that one?
For the, if it was for just that option two, Madison at Fremont, and the $3,000, we'll be able to accommodate it within the operating budget. The higher cost options, we would need to discuss contingency or something along those lines, but the $3,000 we'll be able to accommodate.
Okay. So in your motion, which option were you presenting or moving forward?
The motion is to move forward with the painting of the crosswalk on Madison Street and Fremont Street.
Okay.
So it does not include the flags at this point.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, so the motion is Resolution 24-65, which is a crosswalk installation on the north side intersection of Madison Street and Fremont Street. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Kednau?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 24-66. Misty, can you read that?
City Council Resolution 24-66, Approval of the Adjusted Lake Mills Urban Area Boundary.
All right, do we have a motion?
I moved to approve Resolution 24-66, which is the delegation... which is a delegation of approval of the adjusted urban area boundary.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Steve. Staff comment?
This is something that occurs once every 10 years, uh, it's required by the DOT, so they, um, they initiated the process, sent us our, uh, previous urban service area boundary. We had, um, a few conversations with them, a meeting with them to put the boundary that wind up with, uh, other documents the city had, the comprehensive plan, uh, things of that nature. This really is utilized for, uh, which streets are going to be eligible for STP urban, um, grants from the DOT. Um, if we're, if they're within the urban service boundary, they're considered urban roadways and therefore eligible for those grants. So it's looking at areas of, uh, anticipated growth that we think will occur within the next 10 years. Anything that isn't expected to occur within the next 10 years doesn't get included in the map, or if it's already urbanized, then it's included in the map, so, um, that is why it's before you tonight, and, um, the DOT requires city council approval, so staff recommends approval of the urban service area boundary. Um, and if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions? I have a quick one, I didn't have a chance to go back and look at the old map, but is there many tweaks from the previous map?
I don't know that I'd say many, um,
but probably the most significant is, is making sure that South CP Avenue was included, um, in the map. In fact, uh, the last discussion we had was to move over the eastern boundary a little further, just to make sure it was clear, uh, that's if South CP Avenue was extended, that-
Sure.
Uh, that was included. I think that was probably the major, uh, change and concern. We did do a little bit, uh, of discussions with the DOT on how Harvey Road, uh, exactly what's in and what's out, and you'll see a little bend in that line on the far east side. But, uh, again, you know, we already have an LRP funding for a portion of, of Harvey Road, uh, so we did include if there's, something does extend to the south, that potentially, that's included. Other than that, Drake, I would agree, I don't, I don't believe it's too much different.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, so the motion to approve is, uh, Resolution 24-66, which is a delegation of approval of the adjusted urban area boundary for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. All right, next is item D on the agenda. Uh, this is Ordinance 1268, the third reading. Uh, Misty, can you, uh, walk us through that?
City of Lake Mills Ordinance 1268, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44 Sub A, Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel Identification Number 24607131223006. Owners Jacob Arnt and Gail Oglesby, 805 Linden Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, so that's the third reading of this ordinance, so, uh, it's up for a vote tonight. Is there any, I guess we should have a, a motion for approval.
I move to approve Ordinance 1268, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Mary. Uh, is there any further staff discussion or any questions from, uh, any of the council members?
Nothing that hasn't been brought up in prior readings, but happy to answer questions if there are any.
All right, seeing none. Let's move forward with a roll call for Ordinance 1268.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
All right, thank you. Item E is a similar, uh, third reading situation with Ordinance 1269. Of course, a different si, situation. Um, can you walk us through this one as well, Misty?
City of Lake Mills Ordinance 1269, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 660-44 Sub A, Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel Identification Number 24607132314000. Owner Sean R. Topol, 1341 Topol Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance 1269, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance, Official Zoning Map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Second.
All right, so the motion was made by Michelle, second by Mary. Third reading, so, uh, we owe this one a vote. Um, any comment from staff on this tonight?
Um, similar to the last one, nothing that hasn't been mentioned in previous readings, but if there's any questions that have come up, we're happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions from council? Seeing none, can we have a roll call for Ordinance 1269?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is a first reading, so this will be a little bit different, uh, of Ordinance 1270. Misty, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance 1270, 2025 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
All right, that was the first reading. Uh, any comment from staff?
Nothing specific, uh, this is just, uh, the, our, our, uh, budget is approved by ordinance annually, which requires the three readings, so we have it on the agenda to stay on schedule, uh, for approval. Obviously, we will still have the work session for in-depth questions and analysis from the council. Um, if there are any questions, happy to answer them, but, uh, this keeps us on track for, uh, November approval.
All right, any questions from council members? Seeing none, this will move to a second reading at our next meeting. Uh, next on the agenda is item G, which is Ordinance 1271. Misty, can you read that, please?
Ordinance 1271, 2025 Capital Budget.
All right, that was the first reading. Probably a similar comment from staff, but, uh, do you have anything else to add?
No, we got it, nothing, nothing more to add than previously stated on the last one.
All right, any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move this to a second reading at our next meeting. All right, so that'll be for approval prob, if it stays on schedule the first meeting in November. Recommending, recommendations for future agenda, anything from council, uh, from, uh, staff for recommendations?
I believe, uh, an item that was previously at the Plan Commission, uh, conditional use permit, um, at, um, it's the gray small auto, uh, conditional use permit. Uh, we'll be, uh, ready for, um, the next meeting, we believe, so that's the, um, that's the one thing on my mind that, to mention.
All right, anything else from council members? Yes?
Um, uh, next steps for our strategic plan working session outputs. I'm not sure how we address those, except as an agenda item.
Um, well, we, uh, we have the next steps for each of the three priorities that were outlined, so that was what I was focusing on for those. If the council would like to have a formal vote to adopt that, the year, the, those three priorities, we certainly can. I don't, I don't think it's necessary, I think it's work product, um, that came out of it, and we kind of had some direction out of there about what the next steps for those three items would be, so that's what staff is, is planning for right now. Um, so if you take a look at, uh, the, that, uh, summary report that went out, uh, it has those action steps, those are the, those are the pieces we're focusing on, um, as far as timeline.
So they may not be at the next meeting, but at some point, those will come forward then as agenda items.
Yeah, I think the first one, one of them had the, some expectation in December, and then the other two, I think, were January or February, uh, first quarter of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes?
I think it warrants to have a co, a discussion about this century building, considering we've received correspondence. And so I would like to possibly discuss what's happening, or what we know to be happening.
So is that like an update you'd like to see during this city manager report, or what are you looking for here?
Um, sure, that would be fine.
Does that seem fair?
I won't have anything for you.
Okay.
That was December, maybe the one of the December.
I won't have anything more than that to say.
Okay.
I, I don't have, I don't have any active engagement on it at this moment in time.
Okay, and just thinking back to our strategic planning session and, and the next steps that we were considering, maybe talking about those. And I think we were talking, was that the December timeline, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't have to happen this month.
Okay.
No, no panics.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Uh, I will adjourn this meeting as of 7:43. Thank you.
Thank you.